Restriction would apply to everybody based on stream flow triggers. This version of it, the stream flow triggers only would apply to water customers. The private wells come into play when the state starts declaring levels of drought. So that's when the private wells would be restricted as the state wraps up their crop deck restrictions. The way it works is our stream flow restrictions would usually go into effect at some point every year. Mandatory restriction is usually required at some point every summer. And then, you know, every, probably year, a few years, every, once every five years, whenever there's a serious drought, that would kick in to regulate the private wells.
So Greg, is this then changing the policy? You just said when we went to town meeting, everybody voted that it would apply to everybody. So now we're saying...
They did, they did. But in the, the way, you know, the bylaw was originally is it referenced stream flow triggers in our water management permit. So when the water management permit ceased to exist, then you run into the problems of if there's no permit, how can you reference the stream flow triggers in the permit to apply the restrictions to the private well users? So this, the way it's written now, the stream flow triggers will kick in for public water customers. Private well users will be able to continue to use water for a period of time until the state starts declaring droughts, different levels of drought, and then, then they would join in the restrictions with the public customers.
So that isn't...
So things that happen, things that happened like this past summer, rather than not having any regulations at all to affect private wells during certain times depending on the drought status, you know, the regulations would apply to them as well.
So if I'm understanding it, the town voted that water restrictions should apply to everybody, and then we didn't have the permit anymore, so there was nothing to bounce up against to say when the restrictions would come in. But now that we have stream flow restrictions, wouldn't we go back to when those going to affect, it would affect everybody?
Good, it's an option. That's not the way this is written, but that, that is an option so that people that have wells, you know, follow the same restrictions as everybody else from essentially day one.
So I'm trying to get to the thinking, if the town said before that it should be for everybody, why are we writing it this way now saying the wells are not impacted until it's a severe drought?
I think the, the town voted that way because the state was making us make a choice between, you know, two options that weren't really that logical. You know, we had to choose between either applying stricter restrictions to just the water customers or our, the restrictions we eventually had on everyone. You know, this was not an option back then. So this is basically keeping the stream flow restrictions as they were in the original permit because we needed that, those to live without a water withdrawal permit. And then applying the restrictions to the private wells as the state sees it to be necessary because of drought conditions.
So maybe if I could, Superintendent Crum, when we spoke about it, it was sort of a middle ground, right? So initial intent was locally, our customers, the river hit certain thresholds that basically exist, but just with some small tweaks, mid voluntary mandatory. And then when the drought happens and everybody, you know, at the state level, it's announced that we're hitting a certain level, then we regulate everybody. But that certainly is up for debate in the conversation. That's why we're here in the work session. And if there's a different perspective that the board would like us to consider, we certainly can go back. But that was, the intent was kind of try to hit it now in the middle and then flex in whatever direction if we needed to.
I mean, I don't know how you answer this question, but if I'm coming into Topsfield and I buy a house here and I have well, I'm not on town, am I told anything? Am I told that you've got a different set of restrictions that apply to you when it comes to, you know, managing during drought times? Is there a law that says you have to be down?
It would be coming down the purchase, presumably ask that specific question, the realtor would probably look up our bylaws or call Greg and say, hey, what's going on? How does this work? And we would explain. It's complicated, every community is a little bit different. When we did our first analysis, some communities have handled the way we've handled it where it's just customers and other communities, they have the blanket across the entire community, private well and public well.
But I don't know if that's any different for somebody who's not on well. There's a sign that goes up, says we're on water restriction, see website. I know that's how we did it. You have to go and look, what does that mean?
So Greg, if I can just go back to you, I'm going to pick up on, on kind of Lynn's question because you're, you said, at least I think you said in the kind of giving us the history, that people at town meeting spoke and said that they wanted it to apply to everyone. But it sounds like what you're saying is they were given two choices and what they really did is they chose a choice that included in it, applied to everyone. It wasn't that they went there and said, yes, we want well owners. Like that wasn't the, the core of the choice they were making.
Correct.
Okay. Because I, I think, and I don't want to speak for you, but I heard the, the town spoke and said they wanted it to apply to everyone. So I thought that that was the actual discussion, do you want it to apply to everyone or not? But it sounds like there was some greater, different discussion.
Greg, the question has come up, and I don't know how to answer it because I don't know enough about water, but the question of, is the town well pulling from the same source as the private wells? So if we don't treat everybody equally, we're all pulling from that same pool of water? And it's unfair?
The town wells comparatively pull from around a small section of town. So there are, are places in town that could withdraw, you know, millions of gallons of water and not have any effect on the town's wells at all. Basically, if you know where Stewart School is, the Perkins Row Pump Station on Milebrook by the Stone Bridge, the town's aquifer extends from basically the Stone Bridge up through the intersection of Ipswich Road and Route 1 to North Street, Clock Park area, up to where Pine Brook crosses Route 97. And then, you know, up beyond Route 97 and into, by the landfill into Boxbury is really where the, the overland flow of water will eventually make it into the town's aquifers. But the, the area that, if somebody sunk a well in that would dramatically affect the town's wells is relatively small compared to the footprint of the town.
And so there are no wells, are there any private wells in the...
If you look at the groundwater protection district, that's essentially the zone of influence for the, for the town's wells.
So are there private wells in the area where the town's wells are and they're pulling water?
Oh, sure, the, there are a few areas, mainly the outer parts of Payable Road, Rowley Road. Those areas will eventually drain into the, the brooks that go by the town, off the hill.
But they are hydrologically connected, right? So I mean, if we've got low groundwater levels over by where we're pumping, there's also low groundwater levels presumably across the entire town. Is that fair or not?
Yeah, I would, I would, I would say that we have low levels in our, our wells and generally there'd be low levels all over town. It's just that there's, if you, if you go, if you have a well, you know, where the town hollows, you can pump that all day long, you're not going to affect us because it's, you know, hydrologically separate from, from our wells. So there are, there are large portions of town that are, are independent of our, our system, but theoretically, everyone's drawing from the same aquifer. So if you're, if you're taking water out of one part of town, you know, you may not be affecting us or Topsfield's wells, but you might be affecting some of your downstream from us.
And ultimately, Greg, are our wells pulling from the Ipswich River, which is why if that's running low, we have to curtail usage?
Yeah, our, our wells are along some of the tributaries to the Ipswich River. So we're basically intercepting the water before it gets to the river. This, this is how it works. We basically withdraw water from sand and gravel deposits that are alongside Milebrook and I think it's a section of Pine Brook. And the infiltration of those streams into the ground would take water that would otherwise, you know, potentially make it to the river, which is why we had these restrictions imposed. Along with being a small groundwater source, we don't really have any storage. So when our use is the highest, like during the middle of summer, you know, river flow is already low. So we're taking our highest demands there at times when the river's already under the most stress.
So Greg, what would be your statement then, kind of the soundbite to say to people, if we're all pulling from the same aquifers that are feeding into the Ipswich River, why should some wells be exempt? Even if they don't directly impact the Topsfield well, but you said it might be someone downstream. It's impacting the river, we're all connected. What's the rationale to leave out the, the people with wells?
Well, I think it, it gets to whether the town wants to regulate private wells. Initially, it wasn't really a choice, a reasonable choice that had to be, could be made. There wasn't, it was a choice of A and B, there was no, you know, C option in the, in the options that the state gave us. This is kind of another option where the, you know, kind of acknowledging that, yes, it's private property and you can use your well for a period of time, but once things get into a more serious drought condition, then everybody has to, you know, follow these steps to conserve the water.
Do we know, Greg, do the big firms that are on Route 1 that have lush green grasses all during the summer, are those private wells?
Yeah. Yeah, there's a number of especially the business parks north of near Cambeen Road and further north, all the ones that we would regularly get calls about, those are all fed by private wells, at least their irrigation systems are. They all also have our parts bar for domestic purposes or in, you know, serving the, the actual buildings.
One of the other challenges that I would mention too is if you invested in a private well for irrigation purposes, as Superintendent Crum just mentioned, and you make, we make that change, that could be obviously of a significant cost that somebody just put in and because they had an expectation for a number of years. Just an intangible doesn't mean that drive the decision, just something to think about as well is that we might have people put them in in the last few years, like these businesses as an example.
And can, can I ask one more question too? I know mineral rights extend below your own property, is water considered that same thing? Like, are we getting into a legal quagmire here about who owns the water below their own property?
Yeah, I, I, I've heard there's some discussion about that in relation to Middleton. Middleton used to have a private well by law there, I think one of the first towns in, in the state to put one in place, and they have since repealed it. And I've heard that, you know, there are some federal mineral rights, mineral rights statutes that were used to justify the appeal of that, but I haven't yet to find out any information about whether that was voluntary or through, I believe it was through a, you know, a court challenge or, you know, a legal challenge. I think that was, they just eventually got it up in front of town meeting and repealed it.
Using this past summer as an example, because, and, and I know that this past summer was extra droughty, if you will, how long were we, over the period of time that we went into water restriction, at what point did, did the state, would the state have triggered where it would have affected the wells? I know it was a garbled question, but basically if it was, say, three months of restrictions, how much of that time was town only and then when did it become a state mandated thing that would have impacted the well owners?
Absolutely, I'd have to check, but I, I think we went into our restrictions fairly early, it was I believe in June.
Yeah.
I think the, the state drought declaration certainly would have been in place by July.
Okay.
So through the worst of the summer.
So for the bulk of the summer, if I can interrupt, when we talk about these firms on Route 1, they would have been under restriction. By, by the time we got to July, then we probably wouldn't have seen lots of green lawns in front of businesses on Route 1, or at least if we did, we would know that something was going on.
Greg, to Raphael's point, if the state declares drought, can they control the minerals beneath your gra, you know, your grass? Can they control the water? Or are we just putting it in our bylaw that we're saying, if the state does that, then we're going to take these steps? Is it state mandated or are we controlling it?
I think the, the way it's being written now is the state would declare the drought and then we would implement the restrictions and enforce the restrictions.
Okay, so we are saying we are going to control at some level, the water in their wells.
We're just moving the, we're, yeah, we're just moving the, the line down a little bit.
The needle.
But that's, that's the state controlling it.
No.
No, that's, that's the state.
That was my question. It's not the state controlling it. They declare a drought, but it's our bylaw that says now you well users cannot water your grass.
Oh, I thought that was, okay.
Because it's, I, yeah, to, and Greg, you can be clear on this, the state doesn't mandate it, we're just using a state declaration as our decision point when we would mandate it.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. I don't know, for me, it's still very much a legal question of who owns the water below their own property.
Have we gotten any KP input on this one?
No, this is a preliminary conversation, just from this high level, if we're going in the right direction, so.
It'd be worth looking into because we are mandating it at some point, we're just saying this is the, this is when, yeah.
And I would say though, again, I, every community is a little bit different, but I do know there are communities that do mandate private wells. That's correct, Superintendent Crum?
I believe there are, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's not, if someone makes an investment in a well, we're not saying you're losing your investment, we're saying you just have to water a little bit less. You know, some of these are every other day or between certain hours or, and we're not curtailing in-home usage, it's just what you're doing with your grass.
Superintendent Crum, could you just confirm, do you know generally when the drought was lifted at the state level?
It was lifted? I don't think we're out of the drought yet according to the state, but still looking up here to see.
Comes out Thursday, Saturday.
What level we're in, but I believe it's, we're still in a state drought.
And historically speaking, and I know it's hard because you don't have the data necessarily right in front of you, it's time, we can break it back, but last year is, Chair Hook mentioned was exceedingly dry. How often does the state issue a state of drought? Have you seen, have you ever, like?
Well, I think we're not...
Last year was.
I think the way this is written, it has to be a significant drought or more severe. So a mild drought wouldn't trigger the, the private well restrictions. And right now, we're, they consider us to be a, a mild drought as of the fourteenth of this month. So just a couple of days ago, they, they updated this.
And that's, that's the trigger where that person would come out, the private wells would come out of that restriction?
Yes.
And we would still have our customers still within that restriction? Or is that lifted as well?
I think our, our customers, the restrictions for stream flow basically end at the end of September because after that, outdoor water use tends to, to drop off. So we were looking at this, we were in a significant drought as of the first, of last, of earlier this year.
So maybe a modification, something considered, we do want to have that component of the private wells would be, I think it might make sense to put it in line with our customers?
Well, yeah, because it sounds like based on this, we, our customers would be out of restrictions and the well owners would still be in.
Still would be able to irrigate, correct?
The way, the way.
The, the different lines we draw, which would be a, which would be an interesting, an interesting flip of that coin.
You said 20% or something?
20% or...
20%, our own wells here?
Eighty percent customers.
Twenty percent are on, on wells, yes.
Soon that'd be a number.
It's commercial and presidential.
Can I ask an unrelated question, or we still have more on, on the, this? It was about Pine Brook. What wasn't clear to me was what we can do and cannot do because a few weeks ago, we talked about putting those wells in because we have to maintain the vegetation on the cap.
Healthy roots. Healthy roots, that's the, that's the rule.
Healthy roots, right. But I, I just had a little bit of trouble going through here. It seemed like it was saying that we cannot, in, in severe drought, even in severe drought, we cannot water at Pine Brook?
We're exempt with DEP because it's a landfill.
We are exempt.
Yeah, there were exemptions in here for a couple of things.
The other thing, Greg...
Typically, things that are required by, by regulation, firm data for public safety are exempt from the bylaw. So irrigating the, the cap above the landfill or if somebody puts in an septic system and is required to establish vegetation by the conservation, conservation commission, you know, those types of things are exempt.
Okay, great.
And the other, one other piece that, some feedback we've had from, we've had some conversations with local community, and we're actually talking about this later as a more article, but ball fields in general. We have an issue specifically at Clock Park that we've been trying to deal with for two years, and there's some advocacy to say, why not say that that's exempt now? I won't give my opinion right now, but I'll just say that that's something that's been discussed as well, that's, we want to be considered.
So there are properties that can, can be exempt, how those exemptions are given is...
We can make those calls. If it's a municipal purpose, for example, we could, like, we're exempt to zoning, we could be exempted. I don't necessarily think that's the right thing to do, we need to be good leaders and show an example, but there is the argument that playing services are a safety hazard if they're not well maintained and well kept, so.
Yeah, because I think in here, the words are included saying that we have the ability to override in here.
Okay.
It, it says review and approval through the select board, irrigation of public parks, recreation fields, et cetera, so.
That was actually part of our conversation was we added that language in for the purpose of this conversation. Does it require us to? It allows the opportunity for us to, if it, if it builds the right thing to do.
Okay, we're at nearly 5:30. This is still only the first item on the agenda. Is there more that people want to discuss? Obviously, we need, we're going to spend more time on this.
It sounds like you're, you guys are going to do another version of this or...
Maybe check with KP about the legal issue?
Yeah, why don't we start with that?
If we're, generally if we're in a good place with going through this process and updating the bylaw, and generally speaking, there isn't anything that we feel strongly we want to change or modify, we'll go back to KP, ask that question about mineral, mineral rights and just confirm that what we're mapping out works from there.
I feel like the two questions we have, if I had to summarize, is A, what are we doing with wells? And B, what are we doing with any potential exemptions of things like town fields? Am I correct that those might be the two areas and we have more question and conversation?
I think the second one got answered as far as I'm concerned.
It, it says here that we have the ability to override it, but it's not mandatory, it's under here.
Oh, okay, so...
So I think that one's probably okay.
Okay.
But, yeah, I mean...
So it's just that it must turn around the wells?
Yeah, because...
So, so the field thing doesn't have to be answered in the bylaw, the bylaw gives us the opportunity after the fact to create an exemption.
Right.
Okay.
So if we get KP's answer, it may be that the way it's written right now isn't legal because we can't regulate at all even in a stage two or three drought.
And we also know that as we work through this, coming out the other end, we've written it in such a way that we would have restrictions on well owners and not on our customers, so...
Well, that would be, I think that's something we can easily put some worry to because I think that needs to tie.
Yeah.
I would say strongly that needs to tie.
Would we say that it's probably legal because otherwise we wouldn't have been able to pass it at a town meeting and, because we already did pass it, so...
I'm not really comfortable saying that at this point.
I think that there's...
Any likely legal?
Probably would have been looked into.
I think that there's enough examples of communities that have for private and public wells restrictions that this is probably embedded in other places. That's my assumption, purely an assumption, but we'll make sure we have that answer to that question when we talk to KP.
All right, Greg, thank you very much.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Good night.
Our hybrid system worked kind of well, as long as there's only one person who's joining us.
Well, the other options, we can connect that to TV, right?
And then we're all going to be doing this?
Oh, no, 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 that one we look at down here.
Next item on our agenda, and do we finally have an MOA with the fire department or the, the part-time firefighters?
We do. If you see in more docs, we have a fully signed by the local 3250 Topsfield Fire Department. The language in here solidifies the change going from in the contract 12-hour shifts to 24-hour shifts, with the discretion of the fire chief to be able to make certain decisions with regards to those shifts. The plan will be now that we have this is to, to create the most coverage at the fire station, which would mean four of the six shifts when we hired two new per the budget last year would be on 24-hour shifts and two would be on 12. You know, I do want to say thank you to our firefighters, the efforts they made working with myself and the chief to, on this document. They were very thoughtful, very particular, and they, I think we ended up with a very fair document that expresses some of their desires to make sure we can keep, have the conversation as we go into the regular collective bargaining, whatever impacts it might have, if any, can be part of that conversation later on as we negotiate with the state. And for the town's purposes, it solidifies what I think is in everyone's interest to get to 24, so. I don't know if you, do you want to mention anything at all? You don't need to.
No, I'm very excited. We've been waiting a long time, feels like years now, to get to this point, so we're excited.
And Chief, you said this is not going to cost anything additional over and above the hiring of two firefighters that are paid through our budget?
Right, the, 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 the ratio, if you will, like, they, they work an average of 42 hours a week over eight-week cycle, it all, it's all the same, so.
It's the same, it's a wash?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But you're, you're blessing it because last time we talked about this, you were, there's a lot of work to be done.
There is a lot of work to be done, but...
You feel good about this?
Yeah, because we've never had a guaranteed response from the fire department, so now we'll have at least one person, which is not a lot, but it's something. So we, that's, we never have had that before, so.
Jen, if there's only one person on, do they have to get a second person from a surrounding town to support to make the call?
They will, will, will set things in place so that they'll, if there's only one person, if nobody else picks up a shift, first of all, it's not much you can do with two people, but they can start out. But if there's only one person, we won't, we won't be available to go anywhere else, so we won't be able to offer mutual aid. We would request mutual aid, so we'll have all kinds of policies in place if there's a case when there's only one person there, so.
Is there ever a time when you don't get the mutual aid and the person just can't go out and they have to stay in the fire?
No, they would still go and assess the situation and get help. To be honest, mutual aid is harder and harder to get and you have to give to get, so, you know, we do a good amount of helping out other communities, but I'll give you an example. This morning, we needed an ambulance for paramedics and the closest was a private ambulance company that was in P V that had to go to Davis and pick up an ambulance and then they would come here. So it's a nationwide problem, we were addressing it at many different levels, but that's a, that's like a whole nother thing that's going on as well in the industry, so. But this is like a quantum leap for the town of Topsfield to, to actually finally have a guarantee that someone will come.
So right now, we have what percentage of calls that don't get answered?
We have very few calls that don't get answered because frankly, I don't go anywhere, I don't do anything but answer the calls, so that's the reality of it. So we've had a handful over the years that nobody's come and that we've had to have a mutual aid company, but, but really, only one person can't do anything, so it needs to have, you have to have more people. When we talk about shifts at night, we've had an increase in participation at night lately in filling shifts, so we've had many less shifts not filled. So this will be interesting to see how it works out because there are now going to be less shifts available to be filled, so hopefully, people won't be working alone. That's the goal, so.
Emphasize, I would just emphasize that, that is something we talk a lot about and it's really important.
With everyone, yeah.
From everybody's perspective, myself, chief, team, I know the board has basically talked about it as well, that we do everything to prevent a single person in the station trying to get fill that second shift. And like the chief said, the numbers will hopefully come down dramatically and hopefully we don't have a situation, but we've talked through it quite a bit to make sure we're at a comfortable level in the event that does happen.
And Chief, those shifts get filled by people doing overtime, signing up to do overtime?
Or call firefighters working shifts. So that's obviously preferable because they're less, they're less costly, but they're, it's also an unbelievable opportunity for them to work with a full-time person, to develop more of a comfort level, more of a skill level to do training while they're working. So there's a lot of benefits to everyone in this.
Do they sign up ahead of time?
They do.
Okay, so it's not like you don't find out until that night?
No, 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 we sign up a month, we had a whole, we have a whole process, they sign up a month ahead and this will, this will change a little bit more how we do that, but everybody's been great, the, a call firefighters have been really great about wanting to work and, you know, sticking up for themselves and their, because it's basically a, a call department because we still have so few full-time firefighters, they're a really important part of the department, so.
So if their concern was they didn't want to have just one person on a shift, they're going to know a month in advance those shifts are filled?
Yep, or they, or there'll be open shifts that they could sign up for, yeah, yeah.
And by sure means, I'd also mention, you asked about the cost of doing this, there is no additional cost in what we have today, but there are, there is the potential for changes, the way it's now modeled, instead of having... But there are, there is the potential for changes. The way it's now modeled, instead of having two full-time working together, we'll have a full-time typically with either a full-time and overtime or a call firefighter, so it's almost two tracks for each of the shifts. So we'll have better coverage. We'll we'll in most, almost every case have a full-time career firefighter working. But it might not be two this time. It might be a call with a full-time. So when we go to the full regular negotiations, that may or may not be something that comes up at the table.
What would come up at the table?
To change the fact that they're not working with a full-time person, guaranteed full-time person.
Okay, which they know now, so then I.
Right now, they're scheduled to work together as full-time people, so moving forward, they won't be at night. At daytime, they will be, at nighttime, they won't.
And that's what this letter says. They understand.
They understand and they understand that we're all going to make our our best effort to make sure that that never happens, that there always someone else there with them.
And we we acknowledge that anything else with collective bargaining, that union is their right to say that there's a change in working condition or there's impact, impact bargain. We're not having that situation yet and not saying it will, but we did promise that we would keep an eye on how the, what the impacts look like. And if there are, I wouldn't be surprised if something came up as a discussion point.
It sounds like that was acceptable to Jonathan Hallanen, the president of thirty-two fifty, so you explained that in a way that he was comfortable with.
Yeah, 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 they've been, they've been, they've been great. Everyone's been great.
As well as David Jenkins, our attorneys, review all this and been.
So what might come up at negotiations that you're finding people are not signing up and so there are, there is just one person on a shift? What would come up at negotiations then?
It could be that, it could be that someone, now a person, a full-time is put in a supervisory role and they're not necessarily a supervisor. Like those kind of differentials and acting out of grade, those are the kind of things that you you might look at.
Not tied into this, though, those sound like different issues?
They're a result of the schedule change. I guess that's the.
Potential. I mean, it's 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 all unknown, but it's just when you ask the question, I want eyes wide open. Like, you know, we're going to be going into negotiations in the coming months and, you know, it did come up at the table. There's a point where there was some financial, a lot of financial considerations that we put out and we we're looking to know that's not what we're here for, this is not what we're going to do. But we said we're going to find the data, we'll see what happens, and we committed to have the safest working environment reasonably possible. And we're going to see how it works.
I mean, to be fair, anytime we get to a new negotiation on a contract, any number of things can come up.
Anything can come up. It just, I just didn't want you, anyone to think that this is turning a full page because we don't know what the impacts are going to look like. We don't know if it's something they'll come back to us with if there, if there are. We don't believe it'll have a negative impact on, it's going to allow us to have better service, better coverage, but it's just eyes wide open, you know, and they could, they could not, they might, they might not.
And do we need a vote on this tonight versus Monday?
We would very much appreciate a vote tonight, but we can certainly take the vote on Monday if it's preferred by the board, because we do take a lot, many times, the regular session, too.
In that case, I'm open to a motion. Even though there's not one written, and you're going to have to, you're going to have to.
We had a rant.
How about motion to approve a memorandum of agreement between the town of Topsfield and local thirty-two fifty Tussel Fire Department, the CBA covering the period of July one, twenty twenty through June thirty, twenty twenty-three?
Well-executed, smooth.
So you should have. You have to ask Dick for the video.
I have enough to go to YouTube. Mr. Gann, are you recording?
Yes.
All right, we probably should have noted that at some point. Um, I didn't, do I have a second?
You got one.
I didn't? Okay, well, there was a lot of chatter about the impressive performance thing you played there. So that was very nice. Is there now any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Passes you now.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Yeah, it's exciting.
Well, it'd be great to get some feedback on how it's going.
Right, yeah, the, I have put two job offers out tomorrow in their first day of work. One of them's first day of work will be December first and the other one will be December third, depending on how they choose, should they choose, should they accept. So and then you see, you see there that there's, they're going to work for thirty days with the current crew so they, we can get them really trained because they need to learn how to drive fire trucks and pump them and things like that, so.
Until we get the new ones that drive themselves.
Yeah, exactly, I know it.
I just read an article, LA's got a fully electric fire truck now.
Yeah, we, I've talked to different manufacturers. It's, there's no way it can be fully electric because the pump must be diesel. It must, you must have, it must work. You can't rely on anything else, but I think that's a long way away.
I think I heard when those electric vehicles explode, it takes much more time and water to put them out.
And so it's the fire truck that's on fire?
That's a really bad sign.
Driving into the river.
Cars blow up all the time, it just doesn't make the news anymore.
Uh, all right, this is where I'm going to take things out of order a little bit. I'm going to skip down to the town hall general.
Last item on the agenda. Thank you, Chair Hook. This is, so we went through a very lengthy process to get this right. And initially, we went out to bid on this project. We had three bids. The lowest bid was, I think, a twenty-seven thousand and change to be located directly outside of where the utility room is, the electrical room right here, behind me. The work was done, work, some work was done, as we remember, with the pouring of the pad. I'll own it, I stopped the work. They said that's not where I think the best location was for it. Spent some time with our historic commission, who agreed. And subsequently, we went back to the vendor to find out what it would do take to relocate that over by the dumpsters and have it fenced in, so with buffer and screen and our historic history. And so as a result of that, there was additional cost. It was the cost of the conduit and the trenching associated with it. We had money actually in our article, our warrant article, because the initial bid came in significantly low. And I would say that worth mentioning, the other two bids initially located here were double cost. They actually came in what it cost us to actually locate it over here with Seacoast. And that price probably would have been today would have been much, much higher to locate there with the other vendors if we rebid it through them. But we'd already purchased the equipment and we just modified. It was an addendum to the existing contract. So through the art process, and I know we talked length about the location of the generator, making sure we got it right. We went forward and performed the work. What we needed, what we need is a formal vote to process the contract accordingly and approve the addendum. So that is what is in front of you. And we're taking out order just because we know we're close on time to the master plan and we didn't want to miss the opportunity.
To get this.
Move this one through.
So the total amount that was approved at town meeting, we're still not excited?
We are. So the total amount for the project was forty thousand dollars on the article.
Forty?
Forty, the final number. And again, that was located here. The final number was forty-eight. So in essence, from what we initially estimated the cost, if you take it by that, it was an eight-thousand-dollar additional cost from what we had allocated budget to put it over there.
And that's coming from ARPA?
And that overage will come from ARPA, correct?
But by moving it, it went from, so this one was twenty-seven thousand, moving it over there now is forty-eight?
That's right. It's twenty thousand, seven hundred dollar additional cost on that.
Wow, so half, wow, twenty thousand?
Fifty percent increase on the cost, yeah, correct.
And it wasn't installed, so what was the additions of running that conduit?
So the conduit was the most, well, the generator's the most expensive component of it, but they were literally putting it right here. So there's a cost per foot, linear feet of running that. And you have to run it from this side of the building, the handles of the building underneath from sitting, through the building underneath, and then out the building. Trenched it down, made a forty-five-degree turn at the edge of the building down to where the dumpster location is. And in addition to that, there's, we're pouring the ballers into to put around it to protect it from the dumpster. So there's no damage in the future and we'll we'll re, we'll install the fence around it again as well.
I mean, I think we saw last week or two weeks ago how expensive HVAC conduit and the roof is.
That was going to say for the library.
Remember, we were all stunned that it was another twenty grand for that.
Yeah.
It's, it's a major.
Well, it is what it is.
It is what it is, it's, yeah.
But but to be clear, we'd already purchased a significant amount, so it's just the additional purchase, like the generator cost itself, we already owned it because we paid for it. So at least we're not paying extra because of that.
No, we locked in a great price on that piece of equipment. I don't, not even, I'm not sure how they were able to give us that price for that piece of equipment because we bid it out, we talked to a number of vendors, subsequently talked to a number of vendors. But that was really helpful to make sure that we located the right place at overall a good number. But yeah, that running it's a big part of the cost.
Okay, yes, please.
Okay, motion to approve the addendum to the purchase and installation of a Kohler generator from Seacoast Generator, Seabrook, New Hampshire for Topsfield Town Hall in the additional amount of twenty thousand, seven hundred, for a total of forty-eight thousand, with eight thousand coming from ARPA.
So total is our total, I think.
Well, the additional, over and above what the town.
Your total.
The ARPA is going to cover the entirety, we're supplementing the free cash allocation of forty thousand and using the ARPA money, so that free cash will go back to the.
Right.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There you go. All right, so let's back up to the FY twenty twenty-four budget.
So I distributed a week ago the version one proposed capital plan, five-year capital plan.
Capital plan.
Included in that was a look at twenty-four, as well as projecting out some of our costs for twenty-five, thirty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight fiscal years. And in addition to that, we identified potential funding sources for each of those, each of those, those projects. In this here, in summary, there's no capital this year for the schools. Mostly, I think, it's due to capacity. They have a number of projects they're working on, specifically the box in Arlington. We also have in here any ambulance one. That was something that actually through the ARPA process, we identified as something that was starting to cost us a significant amount of money to maintain that vehicle. We need, the idea is to retire out the older one, the ambulance two, take ambulance one, put it into two, and purchase a new one. We had some lengthy conversations through the ARPA, conversations. Fifth comment is part of that conversation, and we talked about the path forward. Do we buy another used one from somebody in the cave who's looking to sell one that had more miles than the one we already have and pays a significant amount for that? What are we committed to doing now that we're primary, get a new piece of equipment that'll last us fifteen years, Chief?
Hope so.
Fifteen years and be able to continue to do, provide services reliably. So that's, that's one I want to highlight because it's a big one. It's a new one that moved up on our schedule. And you'll see on that one in particular that there's a combination of different funding mechanisms to try to cover those costs between free cash actually using an old warrant article and well as some stabilization, capital stabilization, specifically.
Can I ask you a quick question? Sorry, the the amount on that new ambulance, replacing ambulance one is half a million dollars? And then on potential ARPA projects, under thousand for ambulance?
It's coming from the other funds.
Yeah, so the the cost will be the half million, but only potential ARPA funds. So the way we were, and this is all an estimate at this time, and we're, we'll solidify as we talk about different allocations of what's available for free cash. But only ARPA will cover a piece of it, whereas we have the fire stabilization, capital stabilization, and we have the free caches and the old warrant article.
And we're looking at green communities too, because there's, you can make it a hybrid now, so that could, that could pay a good amount of money, too.
Oh, and we'd get, we'd get a grant if it's a hybrid?
Through green communities, we could get that part of it paid for, so.
But it's generally going to cost more too to get a hybrid, or is that not the case?
Yeah, it would be, so that that would be a wash with that, but then it would decrease fuel, like there's other benefits.
To, to.
But we'll explore all those options on the sustainability side, because and look at it from a financial perspective, best business decision course.
Kevin, just a high-level question. Under our old articles, there's nine hundred and thirty-six thousand that was not spent. Do we know what we didn't buy?
So I would just say to take out seven hundred thousand, because that's an old, water is a whole of a ball of wax.
What was that, though, that we didn't?
On the water?
Yeah, that we asked for and then didn't spend out of the water.
Water tank storage replacement, that's where it appears in.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember.
It just says an old article. That's seven hundred thousand will be used to pay for that, but it doesn't mean that's what the old article was.
So it was an old article dedicated to water that Greg identified that has seven hundred thousand dollars roughly in it. That has already been expended for the, for the project it was intended for. Water's a big capital item, it's usually bigger number, bigger swings. So that's how we got to that one within both the water enterprise as well as that. The idea on that particular one under the water, the one forty-four million, the water tank, is not to take that out for it. We're trying to avoid taking that if we can.
Yeah, I'm just wondering what that seven hundred thousand?
I would have, I don't want to misrepresent it, but I know that Greg had, when I asked him to put together the capital, he did identify that as a, when we went through Howard.
If we could find out the two, the other two hundred and thirty-six thousand that's not water, just where is that?
I can speak to all that. So zero turn, we used ARPA this year. We have ten thousand dollar article for that. That could be used to cover this year's, so we don't have to go for another article in essence.
Okay, is that what they usually are here? They're items that we ended up spending ARPA for?
Some of them are, not all, but some of them, if possible.
The highway department, one sixty-six, one hundred and seventy-six thousand?
That is two, the one ton, the pickup truck, the lifts, and I think that's it.
That were paid with ARPA?
That were originally approved at town meeting for free cash allocation.
If I take this second piece of paper we haven't gotten to, and I think it has a lot of those, pickup trucks on the truck.
Okay. All right, that's good. It just, it looked like maybe we had been over asking for things that we didn't need to spend, but.
I would also mention this too, that, you know, a lot of, you know, with regards to how we deploy the free cash, if we were in a good position free cash-wise, we might not look to roll that into another capital item, but because we are, have been doing really well with the free cash. And I say well, we, I know the town believes that we're kind of hitting the right place when it comes to free cash. We're not barely getting by and barely balancing the budget when it comes to how we actually operate. Now, granted, the last few years, there's been unusual things that have, this hiring freeze, spending freeze, grants that we received supplement regular operating costs that allowed us to have a higher number on the free cash. That's not going to happen forever, but we're going to look to take advantage of that little spike that we had because we have a healthy free cash number at this point. Just a couple other little quick highlights within this first version of the capital. I would note that two of the last three years, we have not received a cruise cruiser. Chief and I spent a lot of time talking about putting cruisers back onto the capital plan this year and really making it a priority. And he'll speak more to it as we go through the process, but a number of our vehicles, we're already well outpacing our maintenance line item because the vehicles have over a hundred thousand miles on them. Two out of three are just top. Chief, because of some of the lead times relative to purchasing vehicles right now, it's significant. He's built in an allocation for two cruise cruisers this year. One, so he can make the purchase in July and then get maybe six months after that, put it in order so that he can get the second one thereafter. Part of the discussion, but that's something that was, that he felt strongly. We did spend a lot of time and I felt after listening to and seeing some of the data, the cost that we have incurred, that it was something I wanted to at least put in the first draft for discussion.
But he's not looking to buy two simultaneously?
No, no, it would be, it would be July one, he needs one desperately, right? If we bought one last year, he'd probably still be, we'd be close.
Almost have it.
Maybe have it, right?
Yeah.
So now we're going to be that far out when we purchase in July one. And then if we purchase the second one a few months after that, we'll be that far out again. So we're kind of now behind significantly. Especially with the maintenance costs that are adding up significantly. We're trying to get ahead of it.
Do we outsource the maintenance or is that kind of town garage?
So we just, we talked about efficiencies and creating operational efficiencies and savings. Our mechanic, two years ago, when Patrick came on, a year and a half ago, we expanded his responsibilities beyond just the highway. He does the COA van, he does cruise cruisers, he helps some of the equipment on the fire. So we expanded his scope to take care of, and it's actually shown some real savings operationally under the maintenance categories for our fleet. We also just, we're throwing it to us, we talked about vehicles. Chief Collins Brown, this year, put in a My Grant for a few items, one of the items we received, which is exciting. I know we're disappointed we didn't get them all, but one of the items that we're really excited about is we're going to have a software that we're being able to purchase that will allow us to put in a fleet schedule. It allows us to track our maintenance, allow us to, reminders of when we need to get certain types of oil changes, tire rotations, so we can actually monitor and also track.
Who's giving that out? Just going to ask a question.
It's, it's. If it's just you're just figuring like, I look at the. Is it just your just finger like, I look at the bar, yeah.
Those notes, that, the light went on, right?
Yeah, it's not very, it's not very well done, that's why, and, and it will give you, the software is, it will give you the ability to compare, like, I was just looking, I did a thing, this is really off the, not off the subject, but I had one of my engines evaluated by a company that makes it, and just as an example, um, they, they quoted me four hundred fifty dollars to replace an air filter. Pat did it for a hundred and twenty-five, so like that's the kinda savings and, and, but then it can also, that software also let you compare market value, market rates for mechanics. So you could see what it would, like really compare and you would see the savings that he um is giving us, so.
Is the um software, like car dude, vehicle, yeah?
I don't, I wasn't here when we bought this, so like, uh, so um, what it will do is, we've got a grant, it's the onboard the software and, and install. That said, it's something of a trial run for us, because on an ongoing basis, there will be recurring software costs to maintain it. That we'd like to, if it works out, be able to build it to the operating budget.
Yeah.
Um, if we use it for a year under the grant, it doesn't work the way we want it, we're not actually utilizing it. Like Patrick's using a different system, how he ever wants to do it, but he's onboard, but this we talked to.
And that was gonna be, is he gonna be the one who's operating this system, or is it?
Mostly, yeah, him and the support up there, because he, it's him, when he does something magic, then he can help. Like you get a summary from your mechanic, that's exactly what it is.
This is great data, like, I know the finance committee always talks about, you know, we all, we all wanna be data-driven, like, what are, what are they actually saying as a result? Realizing this will be um a software where we can get some real reports in real time, how many-
Which we got for free, we got as a grant.
Well, up, upfront cost, they'll be the ongoing costs.
Understood.
Yeah, but yes, potentially, at least, at least upfront, yes, cool, at least one year of, and the fleet schedule too is something that's really important. Um, we do it, we have Excel spread sheet, and we do it periodically, it's not consistent. This would allow us to real-time make sure that that fleet schedule's updated to the minute.
I mean, to be fair, the Hook family has a fleet of three cars and I lost track that one of them was totally out of inspection. Did he finish those?
Kevin, I just a question, going back to the police cars, last year, we didn't approve the police car because we didn't have the data yet back from the electric vehicle. It was only on the street for short period of time and we didn't have the data to kinda make that analysis. Do we know what Chief is looking to buy, these gas cars or electric cars?
I think, and I don't wanna speak for Chief, cause it's an ongoing conversation. Um, we've, I'll just give a high-low, cause Chief's done all this research, he's ready to come in and speak at the right time, but um, the savings on the electricity has been significant, on the operational, the annual maintenance and everything like that. The payback's actually projecting sooner than we initially thought. Um, operationally, it works, uh, we knew going in, it does have a cage, and similar to when we have the, the motorcycle out, uh, nice days. We always have a combustion engine vehicle backing that up with a cage, the, the SUVs, Explorer. Right now, um, we would probably be looking at probably combustion engine for at least one of them. And then the second one, we would, we still, we're still talking through what that looks like. Now, with the ti- the lead times, one of the things, we solicited feedback from our team, set up, you know, officers, how's it working? It's out there, you'll see it, I think it was out today, it's out most days. Um, there's, when asked, you know, preferences, like getting into the details, you know, it is a smaller vehicle than you're used to, it's not an SUV. Um, it doesn't have a cage, there's certain things that, you know, preference-wise, I would say, again, it works, it's just preferences that some of the officers identified. Uh, they have a preference of a bigger vehicle, so that coupled with needing it at this time, wanting to make sure we have reliability, um, of the cage. Which only comes in a combustion engine and hybrid at this time with Explorer. Um, but Chief is looking at some other vehicles, Dodge and some other types of vehicles that are getting a little bit farther along with SUV hybrids, I'm sorry, SUV EVs. Which the technology might catch up to our timing if we're looking-
Add a potential second one, so the first one in all likelihood is gonna be a Ford Explorer or-
That's likely the position we're gonna take, and we, we talked about that last year, we weren't sure where we were gonna go, we could be, we need the data, but we do, we-
I don't think the plan ever was, we're just gonna become an all EV fleet, you know, I, I, I don't think that was ever a discussion. At least not given the availability of EVs right now, so.
Well, it's, if, if um, Chief is collecting all that data, that would be really good, because we had said that was kind of the trial. And to give us all the stats on maintenance, electricity, the pros and cons, everything that you've just gone through, so it'd be interesting to hear the readout on that, but-
Yeah, it's, it's-
A half hour warning.
Okay. Um, I'm just gonna, I'll cover the town administrators, um, there's the annual twenty-five thousand dollars that we talked about, that goes to repair maintenance. It's a big way to draw it down, close to a hundred percent, I never hear. Um, it's, it's, it's important that, that we have it and we use it. Um, there's the fiber phase two, that's a probably not to exceed number, to be honest with you, at this point, I think scope, we met with Contract. Um, they, we've been talking about using ARPA money for that one. And there might not be a phase two, and if there is a phase two, the scope might be pared down to a point where that cost is, could be significantly less. But it might be close to that too, it depends if we, what we put into that scope of work, but um, and then there's the downtown infrastructure improvements, we talked about the potential of a pocket park in the downtown. There's still some work we need to do on that, but that's another one that we've identified potentially ARPA funds to help us with.
Kevin, a quick question, so that, that fiber, when you said we might not do it, it says here to um facilitate the addition of eleven town facilities. Do we have many town buildings that are not on fiber loop right now?
I think I missed that one, I was writing, that's last, that might be last, I took last year's template on that one.
Oh, okay.
So it would be, right now, it's, we're looking at the two pump stations, uh, on the water side.
Oh, okay.
Stewart School, Proctor School, um, and then the potential for a full loop, um, right now, it's a Cascading Star. But the redundancy is, talking with consultant, and it was really interesting here's perspective, cause you're thinking, you'd be trying to pitch us on. You guys, have you had any objections? No, I asked them how often do you see, you know, it's smoothly, it's not.
Okay, this is just an old one, then, I, I was just like, we, we don't wanna put on those additional facilities.
Well, at what point, at what point are we gonna, I see that there's an ARPA line item on here for phase two, so at what point are we gonna pull the trigger, discuss that, or make a move on?
So before um, our water superintendent, uh, went on to great jury duty, um, he was tasked as one of the side, one of his projects to work with Contract, cause the water, uh, the pump stations were his sort of priority, um, to rebuild that scope and to really make sure it's refined. Unfortunately, when he went to jury duty, great jury duty, the directive that he passed along was, make sure we're just getting the bills out, make sure the water's flowing. And we'll come back to those projects once you're back in the office next month, so it has been paused because of that, um, that's simply the only reason.
That the earmarks there for ARPA funds.
And that, it, it's penciled, yeah, it's one of the, we'll go through that next, but that's one of the subcategories that we're, we're considering, but uh, again, that the two hundred roll, well, that could come out, or it might not be, um, we'll see, we'll just see in the summer.
And do you think the pocket park would be delayed until next year, like, nothing's gonna happen before?
So if we end up doing a lease, uh, for the land that we've been talking about, that would have to go to town meeting, man.
Yeah, yeah.
And then at that point, if we come to terms, and then we go to make approval from the town to move that forward, at that point, um, we could, in essence, start moving in the direction.
That was my question too, Cam, cause I said, we have um authority to spend the ARPA funds, but it's the lease component that needs the town to deal.
Right, right, I forgot about that.
Which could then mean, if it doesn't pass, um, I think we all think it's something worthwhile to pro- to propose and to consider and to talk about. Um, and I think you could have a really good positive result if we get there, but if the town does back down, um, you'll see later that our, our numbers are balanced.
Mister Larson, I see you raising your hand.
Just to repeat, we have two years before we have to commit to spend the ARPA funds and three years to actually spend it, so we've got some time. You know, for the pocket park and things like that, just to make sure it evolves.
That, and just from a timing perspective, and I think everybody's probably on the same page, we're really anxious to move it forward as quickly as possible, so.
The pocket park.
Yes, having the design done, the contracts done, everything sets with the town meeting.
That's why a lot, that's why a lot of these are, you know, being helped.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Your momentum is something we have to leverage in that too, or make it urgent, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Something worth getting, okay, well, the last one I'll mention, oh, sorry.
So, go ahead, go ahead.
I was gonna say, the last one I wanna highlight, um, you know, DPW is one of our bigger spenders every year, um.
Gary.
In a good way, obviously, we wanna make sure we have a, a fleet that can plow the roads. We've gone on to a ten-year cycle when it comes to our, um, our pickup trucks, our, our frontline pickup trucks that are daily used. Um, it's a target, sometimes it might last longer, sometimes it might, but you'll see the capital plan, it's a five-year rotating, sorry, a ten-year rotation on those vehicles. Um, with regards to the dump trucks, it's a twelve-year, that's what we're shooting for. So we've kinda got into a rhythm now of replacement on both Park and Cemetery and the highway vehicles. Um, in addition to that-